This is not federalized, there's no federal money.
Right, right.
We manage it ourselves.
Right.
We have a much better track record.
And that, and that alone.
Saves money.
Yeah, and opens up the job to more people because they don't have to jump through all of the federal hoops.
I'm sure that the evaluation selection committee will be as well aware of
Yeah.
the problems that we have run into and will be mindful of.
I just wanted to throw it out there because.
I agree. I mean, just.
It's an important thing to, to call attention to.
Yep.
Because we had so many problems with that contractor.
Mm-hmm, yes. We're doing a great job on the water plant, for example. That's a four, a thirty-five to forty million dollar project and it's, it's going very well. Same thing with getting our new garbage cans and.
Yeah.
and garbage trucks. I think that, that, that's one thing that we can do well when we don't have the constraints of another governmental body, so.
Okay, we need to move along because we do have a lunch break planned. So next we have the additional harbor access, PGI bird section cut through land purchase.
Okay. Let me just introduce the topic. And. Mitchell? Can we? Well, if you put this on the Elmo, I won't. Is there some way you can get up on the screen the agenda item? For the bird cut through the title sheet? Because I'm going to talk my way through it, but the audience wants to see it.
Okay. Elmo's probably the easiest, plus he's.
Okay. Here, Mitchell. So, we have finally received a concrete purchase proposal from the property owner on the preferred route. As we talk our way through this, Hans Wilson, our engineering consultant, is in the audience. The purchase order is as follows. If you want to enlarge it a little.
Yes.
Okay. So, he's requesting four hundred thousand dollars for the preferred route for the land that he owns. He is requesting that the city also convey to him the non-waterfront parcel on Taylor Road that is owned, currently owned by the city. We've done appraisals on, on both of these. He's asking that we prepare and execute a contract for purchase before June thirtieth of this year. That doesn't mean we close, it's just we execute the purchase contract. We close and provide all the dollars and the conveyance within sixty days of receipt of the permit that our engineering consultant of the city will receive, finally from the Corps of Engineers, which I think is our final permit that we need. So within sixty days after we get that, we do the final closing. He wants a consideration that the Taylor Road parcel is basically non-refundable, meaning if something happens, we do not get a permit, or we don't close within the designated timeframe, that we convey the Taylor Road parcel to him. The city will do the survey for the five point eight-six acre parcel that he currently owns. We've done surveys before. This contract for purchase will expire twelve months after the date of execution, so essentially June thirtieth of two thousand nineteen, which, on the surface, we should know by the core, within that timeframe, whether or not we're going to get a permit. And I see our engineering consultant is nodding and said yes. If we don't do something by June thirtieth of this year, the offer is null and void. Again, this is just a proposal, and that the city will agree to construct docks, do the construction of docks, on the remainder of the parcel that the property owner owns, and ensure that they, the cut through will not impair any ingress or egress to the docks. Staff has evaluated the proposal, and just to start, if you want staff's opinion on some of these things. The four hundred thousand is not out of line with our appraisal. It's basically what was the offer, unsolicited offer, and not in written, any written form a few, couple of years ago, to the engineering consultant. It's actually, when, when the offer was made a few years ago, we weren't, the, the thought process was, we weren't going to be taking as many acres as we are now, but it's, it's within reason. It's within reason. The conveyance of the non-waterfront parcel on Taylor Road, we talked about that, oh, God, a while ago, and we did an appraisal on that, and that appraisal came in around forty thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken. The execution of a contract for purchase by June thirtieth, depending on if we can come to terms, it's doable, it doesn't, again, we don't pay anything, it's just we're, we're saying, here's an offer. Assuming we can come to terms, it's doable, if not, we'll have to extend it. Closing within sixty days after receipt of the permit for the fill and dredge, we don't see any issue there because once we get the final permit from the Corps, we're good to go. We, as a staff, we do question the non-refundable pledge and the conveyance, if by some chance this contract, or we don't get a permit, or the timeframes aren't met, that, that's an issue with us. Responsible for survey, again, we've done surveys before, that's, doesn't seem to be an issue with staff. And then the docks, well, the code will dictate how many docks and, and, and the code already establishes how much docks you can put on a particular piece of property, so to us, I mean, if the code allows a certain number of docks to be put on that property, I, I don't see why it wouldn't, but, but for us to go ahead and agree to it beforehand, I mean, as far as we're concerned as staff, the code will dictate what could be done there. But again, that's a discussion we can have. So again, it's a proposal. You know, our engineering consultant is here to talk about where we are with the Corps, if you have any questions. You know, to, if we can't agree on a proposal, it would mean then we would have to go back to square one and try to look at a different route, and we're so far along, we'd like to see if we can somehow, well, again, we need to hear from council as to what we may want to come back with.
I would like to hear from Hans about what the current status is, because I know that they were big on us looking at the other alignments, so, so, I mean, how do we know right now that we need five point eight-six acres? Do we know that?
Well, for the record, I'm Hans Wilson, representing the city in this particular application to the state and federal government for creating the bird cut. The, I think you have two questions. Let me start with answering your question about the acreage. In the initial go-around, when we were developing an opinion of cost to do the project, we approached the McQueens and said, I got to have a number on this property. And that number on that property was not based on any particular acreage, we just had the property, knowing that we had uplands, a very small amount of uplands, mostly mangroves, and then a portion of the canal. And even that portion of the canal, it's indeterminate whether that's drainage esment through there, whether it's a few simple open bottom land, I know it's not sovereign state lands, but at that point in time, that wasn't an acreage calculation that we did, it was like, give me a bottom line dollar so I know what we're getting into. And then part of that was also understanding that the developability of that property was probably pretty limited, and that there was the opportunity for the city to negotiate with the McQueens, perhaps on some other piece, somehow work out an arrangement. So, very basic dollar figure to start the project and give council an idea of what kind of cost we might be looking at, but nothing ever was refined. On the permitting end of things, we have our state permit, the last go-around with the Army Corps of Engineers was twofold. They requested that we did a cultural resource assessment survey, basically an archaeological survey of the site, because we have some other sites in the immediate area that have some cultural resources that have been identified, so we needed to make sure that we didn't have anything on this particular site, of which we did come up clean. That's been submitted to the Corps, who's now coordinating with their commenting agencies on the, the resource survey. I don't expect that to be problematic in any respect. The other thing that we had to do was to go and do a third version of our alternatives analysis. We currently have the National Marine Fisheries Service Essential Fish Habitat folks commenting on the proposed alignment, and in their, in my opinion, relatively narrow viewpoint, their principal goal is to minimize or reduce impacts to resources that are considered to be essential fish habitat, mangroves. So we received from National Marine Fisheries, through the Corps of Engineers, a proposed alternative alignment within the McQueen parcel, as well as requested that we go through and explain in greater detail the current permit application alignment, which is kind of a morph of alternative six, which was part of the alternatives assessment that we presented to City Council. And that, that morphed alignment that we had submitted for permitting was a result of numerous inputs regarding trying to protect resources, trying to minimize cost, trying to address navigational concerns of ninety-degree turns, just this balancing act of trying to come up with something where not everybody's going to be happy, but it's a compromise that is the best of the compromises that we could come up with. Of course, National Marine Fisheries Service came back and their efforts to do their job, for lack of a better term, does not always include looking at the bigger picture. So we received this alignment, which basically took the boats and drove them, drove them right into the sea edge canal exit at a ninety-degree angle, which was a problem. So I ended up morphing that and explaining that in this last version of our, of our alternatives analysis and submitted that to the Corps. The Corps has had that now for about six weeks, maybe eight weeks. That's been up to National Marine Fisheries Service, and so they're in the process, the Corps, of working through those alternative alignments within the property with National Marine Fisheries Service, and my hope is that we will prevail on the current alignment so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. And so if we get a sign-off from National Marine Fisheries Service that says, okay, you're good to go, or they may ask us to tweak it somehow, I don't know what that would be, but those are the last two steps, is getting National Marine Fisheries Service to sign off on it and getting the cultural resource assessment survey approved. And then the last item, which I received just this week, was from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service on issues related to manatees and Florida bonneted bat, was, would we be willing to accept conditions of construction that protected mostly manatees? And, and because we didn't find any resources that would support the Florida bonneted bat, we really didn't have anything that came in on the construction end. And of course, we'd already agreed to accept those conditions when we first submitted the application, saying that we would adhere to all manatee protection measures, so we've responded to firm, yes, not, not a problem to accept those. And that's where we are today.
Okay, so we're still waiting for them to come back on the alignment?
The, it's going to be a resource impact issue, and one of the challenges we have with National Marine Fisheries Service is that they look at what the impact is, but they don't necessarily balance what's been created. And one of the things that we've done for Essential Fish Habitat is, at this point, if you look at the property, you've got the shoreline that's on the Puntagordo Isle side of the property, and you have the shoreline that's on the sea edge canal side, and those are the only two access points for essential fish to get into the mangrove system. When we create the through channel, we will actually be adding an additional doorway into the upland area that is going to be excavated, and the amount of linear footage of access and improved flushing into the mangrove system is significant. And I'm, we're, we're working to try and get National Marine Fisheries Service to recognize that beyond just their very narrow view.
Okay. Questions?
I mean, I read questions more, I mean, I think, I mean, we want this going forward, so I think that we should, I just think we should, the counteroffer should probably make eighteen months rather than twelve months, and that when it comes to the docks, we say the words docks, but understanding that, you know, if they meet code. I, I, I think ultimately, I mean, we're sure it's about this project and we want to see it forward. Why I brought up before, you know, withdrawn thing about the, the independent district, I didn't know that we were using them only because we weren't using them full capacity. Things like this, and simple, the purchase of this land and future engineering, these are the kind of things that the district can actually float a bond for and pay for and be reimbursed, and so part of, I'm just talking about from our fiscal management standpoint, also thinking about when doing this, we can do it in a way that we can amortize the assessment so it can be a small, much smaller one for the residents over a long period of time rather than once, I just had that, but I do agree with doing this.
I mean, I still have reservations about conveying the property as the, as the deposit. Gary?
I tend to be a, a proponent of the KISS principle, sometimes with one S, sometimes with two. To me, there's two pieces of property that are involved in here, they don't necessarily have to be the same negotiation or the same contract. There's also other levels that are involved in this project that, right now, we're just addressing the acquisition of the land. We've heard our most recent report from, from Hans, and I appreciate that, but then once we acquire the land, and then we have to start acquiring, and we're going to do the project, there's all these other layers, and there's also lots of discussion in how to deal with all those other layers. It might behoove us to seriously consider an independent district in this case, pursuant to the, to the laws of Florida, we can even have a council member as a member of that direct board, and the, the individuals for that board would be approved by us in similar matters for CRA or for any of the others, and then they could go out and they could do the bonding, do the purchasing, they would be people that would be of that general area that are going to be, have the biggest dog in the hunt, so that they can make the decisions that are best for, for the section of people that are going to benefit from this cut. So, I think that maybe we should consider going that way, too, and then if Mr. McQueen wants the, on Taylor Street, that should be a separate purchase. I think we should, we should, when you combine things, to me, they get cloudy.
Well, there's a, yeah, there's a potential the city to lose, and we don't, you know, generally want to put ourselves in that situation.
I don't think that we, I think we have an obligation not to put ourselves in that situation.
Allyn has her hand up, so I'll defer to Allyn in the.
You can go.
I feel that the Taylor property should be, is something separate. Mr. McQueen has asked us to, for that property before, and so I, I think that that's, I understand he wants that property, that's a separate item for future negotiation, in my opinion. This is not a large project, this is only a one and a half to two million dollar project. We do not need an independent board. We have structure in place. We can get just as good a deal going through the city. It's, let's not overcomplicate this, we have everything in place today to manage this project. The Burnt Star Isles undergrating is going to be a magnitude of probably at least four, five, six times as costly. I mean, you know, I think you're keeping it simple, is let's continue down where we, we've done a lot of work, laid a lot of ground here, we've put a lot of processes in place, we talked about the assessment, and we, you know. And I, I could, you know, say if, if Hans feels that we need eighteen months, then, you know, I'm okay with eighteen months, but.
I think we'll be wrapped up with our federal permitting in six, or if not sooner.
Okay, so twelve months is fine then?
Time frame is.
In a year, did you say?
No, six months, if not sooner.
Six months?
Yes. We're, we're at the end of the line on the federal permitting right now.
And I would feel that if Mr. McQueen wants docks on his property, he can put docks on his property, according to what our, our code says. I would like to just keep this simple.
Lynn?
As I do every week, I communicate with a lot of people, a lot of people, and you guys only got a portion of the emails that I got over the weekend. I, I agree with Nancy, there is absolutely no need to set up a special permitting district or set special taxing district for this. It's already been voted on, it's already been agreed upon by this council and the previous council, that we have an assessment area, we have outlined the methodology that will be used to build this area, it's a one and done thing, it's over with as soon as it's put through and it becomes part of the canal maintenance assessment project, and it goes into the canal maintenance funds from that point forward, just as all the other inlets in PGI and BSI are handled, they're handled through the canal maintenance assessment program. So there's absolutely no reason to have a separate taxing district. The people in my district do not want it, they're not only upset about it, they're livid about it, so I would highly recommend we don't go that route. Having said that, I have a possible compromise with part of this proposal, and it's, I'll throw it out there, I always like to try to offer a compromise. Mr. McQueen seems to think he wants that piece of property on Taylor Road, and he wants us to give it to him either way. What if we were to offer him forty thousand dollars as a down payment for the purchase of his land, which equates to the value of the Taylor Road property, and we don't agree to that term on his contract? Everything's negotiable, as far as I'm concerned, everything in this document is negotiable. I mean, we already know that we were planning on paying four hundred thousand dollars or thereabouts for the property that we're buying. And add another forty thousand for the other property, so what if we were to say, we'll give you forty thousand dollars at the signing of this document? And that gives him his forty thousand dollar value of the Taylor Road property, and we'll still agree to convey it as, when the contract is done, when we, when we close on the final deal, but that gives him some money upfront, and we can, if he wants it to be non-refundable, then maybe that's the, the bullet we have to bite, but I just think that that might be a way to cut that part of it off at the pass and get that out of the equation. And, you know, we, we can still agree to give it to him at the end, when, when the contract is closed and paid off, but the terms are just, they're too tight, the timeline is too tight, and, and giving him that property either way is, it's just, it doesn't even make sense. So maybe that would be a way that we can work with him and compromise on this, to get to a term and a resolution on this, and get something finalized by June thirtieth, if we have to.
I get that you both feel very strongly about the assessment district, but in defense of any council member, somebody that brings something to the agenda should not be, you know, personally attacked for it. That's our job to look at things and discuss and to come up with solutions. Maybe it wasn't the solution for this, but to just say, oh, I can't believe you're doing this, and why are you doing this, and, and to get livid about it is a little extreme.
I'm not saying I did it.
I know, I know, but we got a lot of your responses, and they were, they were mean. I mean, they were not nice, so, I mean, we should all be civil, and we should all, if somebody brings something to the table, at least be open to listening to the discussion. That was the upsetting part about the responses, some of the responses that you got, that really turned me off, but we didn't, it's been withdrawn at this point, and, you know, things come to the agenda all the time, and it's our job to listen constructively and to have the discussion and make the decision. So, on that note, but if we could get the Taylor Road property, if, if your idea works, I, I just don't see how we want to give away the land if none of this comes to fruition, for whatever reason. I just don't feel comfortable with that. You have a question?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions of, of Hans. What is your, your best feel for whether or not the Corps is going to accept the alignment as approved by DEP without modification?
I think it's good. I, I think the reason why is that the Corps also has to look at the balance of all of the aspects of the project, where National Marine Fisheries Service can be very narrowly focused on resource impacts, the Corps of Engineers has to look at all of the features of the project and determine cost to benefit. So I think we're going to end up, I think I've made a pretty strong case for what we have submitted, and I've provided a lot of supporting documentation to back that up. And so far, I haven't had the Corps of Engineers say to me, now, we don't like this, it's been more of the Corps of Engineers saying, and National Marine Fisheries is commenting, can you please reply back? They're kind of in the middle, trying to manage that, those communications.
How, how much latitude do you have in the Corp, in the DEP permit, if the Corps does require some sort of tweaking, within the, within the property we're talking about, but tweaking of the alignment? We have to go back to the DEP to get the, get that permit modified?
Yes, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't see that as a problem, because the DEP permitted that fairly quickly, I think they recognized, and we were mitigating for all of our impacts, I think they recognized it was a good design, they recognized the need, they understood the water quality impacts, the resource impacts of lessening the boating activity through smugglers' cut. So I would say the Corps, DEP won't be an issue if we have to modify that permit, but I don't see what other alignment we would pursue that would have less mangrove impacts.
And did you, did you publish notice of the issuance of the DEP permit?
I don't remember, it's our standard policy to do that. Whenever we get a DEP permit, we always recommend that we go to public notice to close chapter one twenty opportunities.
Right, I, I agree, that's why I was asking the question, well, good, if you've done that, that's fine.
If we haven't, then I'll make sure that we get it done.
But, absolutely, and the only concern that I would have is if we had to tweak the DEP permit in some fashion, even though we're certain that the DEP would issue the modification, that opens up the opportunity to challenge, too, which then puts at risk whatever it is that we've presented in, in the way of a deposit that may be non-refundable.
So what I'm waiting for is when I get my federal permit issued, if it's, if it's tied directly to the DEP permit, again, if we haven't noticed, noticed it, we usually do, and I'll find that, I've probably, I mean, it's our standard policy to do that, but if it matches the DEP permit, we're good. If we have to go back and modify the DEP permit, as soon as a permit mod shows up, we will publish that change as well, so that we're covered.
That, that gives us, you know, an extra level of protection if we're going to accept something like this.
The deposit of the property, you mean?
If you were to accept, if you were to accept the, the, the term that, in the event that we don't close for any reason, he still gets the parcel, and, and if the closing is contingent upon getting, you know, the permits, there's, there is the potential that somebody could challenge, the DEP permit is the more likely challengeable permit, Corps of Engineers permits technically can be challenged, but it's not that easy. And at the end of the day, that challenge could throw off our ability to close in the fashion we have agreed upon, which would then cause us to have to give up the property and not get the benefit of our bargain. So I just want to make sure we have all those buttonholes closed up and, and seems like Hans understands what I'm talking about.
What I would recommend, if possible, would be to let me work with Howard on getting back with the McQueens on fine tuning the agreement, so that we take into account those timings of, if, if we have to modify the DEP permit, when that publication comes out, when they issue their final permit modification, and put some language in there that covers the city in, on the permitting side of things.
Just by way of whatever advice I can give, which I hope this isn't delving too far into policy, but I've had clients who would put offers in on real property, and they were contingent upon something happening, maybe a sale of a business or whatever, that they were absolutely certain was going to happen, and so they would agree to a non-refundable deposit, for whatever reason that was required, and Murphy's Law would say that whatever it was, that they were absolutely certain was going to happen, didn't happen, and they end up giving up a non-refundable deposit. So if there's any way we can negotiate that out of the agreement, that's what I would propose to do, because there is a possibility that we could get tripped up by someone that's going to take us to court on the Corps permit or what have you, and, and cause us to lose the property. And so we need to be prepared.
I would agree with that. If there's any way to get the non-refundable.
Well, again, as staff consent, and we didn't want it in there, but, okay.
I, I would, you know, try to not have the Taylor Road property as a part of it at all.
I would, too.
But I would like to also suggest that, you know, we have designated Howard to negotiate on other things in the past, so I would like to suggest that we at least can say, these are items that we don't prefer, and then would let Howard do his best.
and then would let Howard do his best, and with Hans and.
Gary.
Lynn, Lynn outlined a possible compromise, and maybe there could be a variation of that compromise that could work. I just want to point out that when you look at the big picture of what this project is, and if you just took a number that this project was a three billion dollar project, the cost of the land is about a hundred and three dollars of that cost of project at four hundred thousand dollars. The increase in property value to the individual properties that would benefit from this is significantly more. There's a big ROI for everybody here. So, even if we had to pay to make it a smooth deal, a little bit of a premium for the land, we shouldn't let that get in the way. So, maybe, you know, we should just take that into consideration when we do our negotiation, that if we up a cash flow to get all this other stuff out, so that he can get his, you know, let's just say it was four hundred and forty, he's want four hundred, we'll offer him four forty. If you want to buy Taylor, you go buy it on your own, or something like, I'm just throwing stuff out, that we should use that as a, a way to get all these contingencies, to be able to protect the city, and at the same time, get it at a reasonable property. Because it's not, we're not talking dollars here that should kill a project like this.
And he hasn't really changed his numbers, so, I mean, he obviously wants the Taylor Road property, so.
Can we, um, Mitchell, can you put up on the screen, I think McHale put on there, the Taylor Road property? And I think we have on there, who owns the properties around there? You look at slide two, maybe? Oh, yeah, there you go. Those are the owners of the properties around the Taylor Road.
Exactly. That's my point.
So, yeah, the forty thousand may work, but he wants this piece. But the non, I cannot live with the non-refundable.
I agree.
Idea.
And it should be separate, I mean, it should, that was not, in the original discussions with him, that was not even part of the discussions, then all of a sudden it came up, so.
I think way back in the day, it's been, it's been looked at, yeah, so, yeah.
Way, way back, and way, way back, yeah.
See, that as it may, it is a separate piece of land altogether.
So, do you have enough direction to?
I have some ideas on how we may want to get this thing accomplished, um, as long as you, you, it looks like you've given me some leeway here. And, uh, I'll, uh, you know, with Hans's assistance, and then eventually the city attorney is gonna have, David's gonna have to help us out here. Let me see if we can bring him back in and try and get this thing back on track. Again, this is his proposal, I mean, he, he offered, what do you want to offer?
Well, it's a negotiation.
And again, some misinformation, because some of the responses were, well, why are we doing this? Well, he, he gave us the offer, that's why we're doing this, to, to try to bring some resolution into moving forward, so we have, you know, shovel ready, if possible, when we do get the permits.
Well, we do want to make it happen. Yeah. I mean, that is obvious, we're, we don't want to do something here.
I think, I think it's obvious, but some days, I don't know.
You never know, it depends on which letter you read in the last ten minutes.
And if we could make everybody happy, believe me, we would try, but that is not possible. That is not possible.
We'll give it a shot.
Okay.
Jay Buckley, I hope you're hearing us.
All right, it's eleven forty. What do we have? Do you want to take the break now, or do you want to do the, the update to the citizens' master plan? That's probably gonna be a long one, though.
No, it's just recommendations for our construction.
All right, let's do that, and then we'll break right after that, before we get to new business.
All right, basically, basically, um, I guess before I, before this part, one thing I wanted to just say, part of this thinking comes from, I think, a necessity and a change of our code is very apparent right now, especially, our current code basically will allow for us to have a very ugly city. We'll have a bunch of square fifty-foot buildings with no architectural requirements of any kind. And I think that from this point forward, that we need to look at including best practices in architecture and planning for any further planning. Because I'd say now, our current code, if things continue as they currently are, it wouldn't be a pretty place. I recently attended a training at, at the Federal Economic Development Agency, and it involved preparing a city, not only for natural disasters, but also for economic disasters, to include like economic downturns and recessions. This agency's primary focus deals with providing cities and counties with grants to harden their infrastructure and economies to protect against future uncertainties. So, they advised us all, they had city and county leaders there, to, to do our best to kind of rise above short-term politics and really truly look at what's really gonna sustain our cities and provide our residents with a quality of life for many generations to come. So, in the spirit, what I'm looking at, wrote these things out, I asked to reconsider building on the success of the two thousand and five citizens' master plan, which did create a very comprehensive vision, and now move into what I would say is Part Two, which is the actually implementation of the vision. This master plan provides a tremendous body of data. Also, we just completed Aqua study, which pretty much, what I, I actually see as an update on this vision, because we, it was very comprehensive this last year. I'd say an important piece that we're missing right now is that of the business community, especially those people who are currently doing business in the city, and those who would like to. In order to get an actual accurate picture of what the current businesses' environment is like, I think that's missing. After which, I think we can design RFP to provide us with a study that is more technical of use than existing plan, because we want to move forward with this. In this planned framework, what I'm suggesting is we include, one is economic analysis of what business sectors are best suited for Punta Gorda, i.e. an updated two thousand and seven Chesapeake study. Also, what level of commercial activity is needed downtown to create a critical mass there by staining itself? Next, the rate of increase of residential taxes if there is a continuation of the status quo. Next, a comparison of the citizens' master plan, Aqua, and the, um, and the business workshop's conclusions in comparison to the LDRs we currently have. A series of renditions of cityscapes based on congruence with these conclusions and best practices in urban planning. Concurrently, when this is going on, let's say if these people were doing this, we then should have a citywide campaign to create more public participation in discussion areas, once the renditions are completed. What I mean by that is like, when they do do, like, simple F dot, they'll have several different versions of possibilities based on best practices, and then they'll invite citizens in, and there'll be just robust discussion based on that. And I think the order of this is important, that we actually have those who are actually licensed in the field to provide us with variations, which then citizens can participate in. Secondly, I think with this increased, um, public outreach, we need to include perspectives of more elderly people, more persons with disabilities, more families, more working people, and more business owners. This expanded sphere of public discourse can then be provided with public education symposia on best practices in urban design, with examples from other cities, like, let's say, like Celebration, Dune Eden, things, you know, other cities that we may be interested in. Next, after this public education period, the renditions of the draft LDR should then be ready. At this time, we should have numerous public hearings to hear all the voices, especially hopefully we have a much larger base of public to talk to. From these hearings, then to compile the citizens' input into one data, and then the council, when they consider compilation of that. And the point of me saying all this is just pretty much the order being that we have citizens' master plan, we have Aqua, we can have a business workshop, we can pile those. Then we'd have whoever, planning group, give us, pretty much compare those with the LDRs. Give, create different perspectives. While they're doing this, we really cultivate our public much, much more, so we can reach a lot more people, and really also have public education in regard to the process, because sometimes what our residents say they want may not be best practices in terms of urban design and planning. So, we want to also increase the knowledge base of our residents. When we have these two things concurrently done, we then come back to the residents with this new picture, have them pretty much give their very, very full perspective on that, and then we can then compile the data of what the residents want and what the expert advice is, and then we decide. That's, that's more or less I'm saying, that we make a much more technical plan than we were envisioning, rather than the old framework we used in two thousand and five.
So, you're saying, um, add in the Aqua study and some more economic development, like actually what types of, like, call out the types of businesses?
And Chesapeake two thousand and seven did this, it's just it's ten years old. And I, I could apply us with that, I have that study.
Yeah, I need to, I need to see that, to have an idea. Gary?
So, if I, I'm clear, then basically, these groups then would, from their expertise, would put out alternatives for us, and then it would be, we, we might have six different direct, six, six different roads that might be suggested, and then public input could, would then be decided whether we take the left, right, in-between, or do we have to find a seventh road?
Yes, yes. And then that's because best practices, I think, need to guide where the city is going. And that, I mean, you wouldn't have a bridge designed just by citizen input, you would want to have engineers put there. So, I'm saying that they would give us choices that are within the parameters of what we say we want. And I'm saying, right now, we have so much data from the citizens' master plan, from the Aqua study, and if we can have a business workshop, we would then have a good base, which then people can then create possibilities. Then, during this middle time, we cultivate our population, so that we're much more, as a, as a community, much more knowledgeable about really what works and what doesn't work in cities. And then come back, and then share, have the public then pretty much participate in this, what all these renditions are, and then.
So then, so then the business community, or, I mean, this whole group, and then when the citizens get in, because like, from my personal concern as a citizen, and the way our coding is right now, is I'm concerned about the lack of architectural accoutrements being wildly terrible. To me, that's more important than we get sidetracked as, case, by the way, I'm, just for the record, I was the one that introduced eighty-four feet, but I was negotiable about it right out the gate. I just wanted to stir a conversation.
You did.
And I did. But, but, but that gets to the point, because when Mitchell was talking to us, he's been talking to us about how, how to design setbacks, et cetera. We saw those in the pictures that I, from Pearl Street, that I included in our conversation the other day. So, this would allow us to really get some, if I'm understanding you right, to get a base to work from, and then bring the citizens in, in an educated way with all of us together.
Yes.
Because the business community is not gonna have the same wants as, as, as somebody that's living on my block, or even myself. But that doesn't mean we can't come to, so that we can all work that together. Because I think we all want a very attractive downtown, and not a uncontrollable.
And that reflects our historic architecture, right now, we're on a different course.
Yes.
And I think the technical aspect is important, too, because like, when we're talking about these buildings, what, what's going in them? Like, that's the whole big missing piece that we really do need to fill out some of those answers. I mean, it's nice to have the pretty pictures and the, the drawings, and the, you know, the, um, canopies, and the balconies, and the, the, the stuff, but what, what is it? What's going on inside of there? I mean, I think we really need, we do need some more direction on that end. Nancy?
I think what you, or what this discussion is missing is what happened back in two thousand and five. The citizens were involved.
Oh, yeah.
And, and Jaime Correa came here, and there were a week-long of charrettes that involved the business community. It was the business community and the residential community that came together and formed Team Punta Gorda. So, it was a collaborative experience then.
But we're not implementing it. I mean, we're implementing it now, I mean, that's what I'm saying, I'm not taking away from that, this is not to mention, so.
And so, I feel that, that when we, as we said, let's update the citizens' master plan, that's taking this and going on and fleshing out, what are these things that we're missing? What are, you know, already, it's like, preserving the historic character of this community is, is vital. And so, what is it gonna take to preserve that historic character? We've discovered these things that seem to be, like you suggested, we've all talked about, um, items. Those are the things that will come out in, in, in charrettes that, to come, that then would be a technical recommendation based on, because, you know, when Jaime Correa came here in, in, in two thousand and nine and spoke to the citizens, or the Team Punta Gorda annual meeting, um, he, he spoke in a lot of technical things going on at the time. Well, now it's much later, you know, so, um, I think that, you know, um.
So, would you?
I think we should proceed the way we discussed. And if we need to do an economic development kind of piece, let's talk with Lucian Peers, because that's who we look to from the county. We didn't, we really didn't have that active of, of economic development in the county back then. So, it's a whole, the county is doing things differently. And, and in my opinion, even if we were to discover through economic development that we needed to have, um, a ten-story building downtown to accommodate something, we're not gonna do that. So, it's, you know, there are certain things that we, we need to put parameters on, because we want to preserve.
Right.
And I think those are the things, too, that will come out in, and.
Well, I would like to look at the two thousand and seven, just to get a flair and a feel for what exactly the content that you're talking about, because I really do feel like it could add something. And if we don't do it all together, and we do one over here, and we're not combining, like you're saying, with the, the research that we already have, and the groundwork that was laid, then it's not gonna be as comprehensive enough. And I do agree with you, you know, we, we heard at that meeting that, you know, they don't like the newest building. They don't want that to happen, but that's our code, and it, the only thing we gave them was a height variance, because the state building codes have changed too, since the Wyvern, and since the Four Points. And so, you know, our code has stayed the same, so we need to really mesh all that out. But I think the public education would be, would be key, and I would like to look at the Chesapeake before we decide anything, but I do think if you read this RFP, it was pretty loosey-goosey back in two thousand and five.
But it was what the residents, the business owners, when they got together and they put something together, it was, you know, Howard and I've talked about this, you know, the guy, and it was discussed, Nancy, or somebody brought it out earlier. The government was really delivering services, they were cleaning up trash. I mean, really provide, keeping our community going. So, look, you know, trying to determine, what are we gonna look like when we, when we are back together again, was the least of their concerns. So, you know, that, that piece of it, there was considerable, I know that at the time, urban, urban design wanted to update the, the land development regulations, and so they used the output of this, the citizens' master plan, to enable that to happen. And like, we've, we've discovered some things don't work. And, and we know, all along, we've talked about for years, the citizens' master plan needs to be updated. And that process will again involve many, many, many public meetings, that where we will engage, um, community groups from all sectors, and encourage people to participate in season, when everyone's here, so that we do gain, I think that.
Well, I think too, what he's saying, Part Two, is like, some of this has been done. Provide recommendations of revising land use and zoning regulations, building codes and building regulations, signings and landscape regulations, and improvements which will allow for the highest and best use of the development of property throughout the city. Like, the groundwork has been laid, but refining of all of that is what we need.
See, basically, what, what this master plan did was, it helped us survive. It helped us as a city survive that storm, and now we need to move to thriving. And there are two different psychologies, like someone who's surviving and someone who's living, they're not the same person, and that's what I'm saying, this is the framework. But now we have to move into the part where we actually now have to think very specifically technical things. And like I said, anything that's technical, which is building a bridge, doing an RO plant, designing a city, actually is gonna be done with the purviews of best practices of that discipline. And so I'm saying that, that it's, it serves our citizens so much better if we give them something that's actually viable to decide on, rather than just having us come up with ideas. It's like, I could think of how to do brain surgery, I could have ideas, I want to advise a surgeon, but I would rather my surgeon not let me advise them on how to do the surgery. I'd rather them give me parameters, sorry, these are the three choices we have, these are gonna, these are the outcomes of each one. And I think in the same way, a city, I think we, we, we take away the seriousness of, of the discipline of planning, architecture and engineering, and how serious it is, and how there are actual workable pieces, that if we actually also increase our citizens' knowledge of what those working pieces are, then we can more intelligently provide input. Because right now, our citizens don't know enough about urban design for us really to have, I'm saying, we're at the point now, we really can make sure our city comes back in a way we really want it to be, really revitalize our, our city to what we want to, but that requires massive public education as well.
I get it, I get it, totally, but I think that if we, I'll just use Jaime Correa as an example. If he were to return here, he, he is going to bring best practices to, to the table. That's what he brought to the table back in two thousand and five, and he will do that. And, and he, or whoever it is, will do that. That's what we put in, in the part of the, the RFP. I mean, it's, that's the expectation that we're going to gather. So, I think we're talking about the same thing, I think it's just, and maybe it's the way we're communicating or the semantics, but I think that's gonna happen, at least, that's my expectation.
We can't expect it, we have to, we have to actually make it happen, we actually literally have to.
Absolutely, but that's part of what.
Have a designed city, not, not hope that we get there, that's the only problem, we were hoping now.
Gary?
Thank you, I was gonna get ready to knock, so.
I'll get ready to knock.
Okay, I have a sense that you, actually, we're all on the same, same level. I think there are a couple of things that we need to keep in, in mind as we continue this conversation and the future conversations. Number one is, is we're talking about really a strategic-type plan. Strategic-type plans, when implemented correctly, are living plans. If we, if we've, the two thousand and five study was done by Team Punta Gorda, was taken to heart by the city, but really wasn't accepted. If we, if we, the two thousand and five, uh, study was done by Team Punta Gorda, was taken to heart by the city, but really wasn't accepted, and as a result, a, and Jaha's point is well-taken, that was the life preserver to keep us swimming until we got to shore. But then, when we got to shore, we didn't continue on a routine basis, for whatever reasons, uh, and so forth. So, we've been talking here about the city taking the leadership role in, in, in these issues. So, as a le, i- i- if we continue to take as a leadership role, we need to, to go down this path together, and this'll be our document, uh, taking input from the various, uh, groups like Team Punta Gorda, God bless them, and, and the other groups that wanna come forward, along with the professionals. And then, once we get that stra- strategic, it's really more of a culture than it is a document, 'cause the document will change. We have a demographic here that, one realtor told, told me that we, are fifty percent of our population, and PGI changes every eight years. That's because we're old and we die, or we move away, or we go to live with kids, et cetera. So, we're talking now, and eight years from now, we're gonna have a larger, different group of people, with different group of eyes, and, and, and some of them will have similar attitudes, and some of them will have different attitudes, et cetera. And that's why the project needs to be continually having a conversation and continually be evolving in concert with all of the stakeholders, and the stakeholders being, uh, the residents of the various different neighborhoods. You know, there's the boating neighborhoods, there's the non-boating neighborhoods, there's the businesses, there's the, the, the government staff, there's the educational people, and the people that are gonna be coming in to it, and then there's also our surrounding community within the county, that we have to, that we have to be cognizant of. And that's why we're talking about Sunseeker, uh, in a sense that we need to take leadership of ourselves to temper any adverse effects, and if there's some positive effects from it, such as increased sales taxes, it'll be coming our way, that we can take back some advantage of that to, to protect our, 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 uh, opportunity here, uh, for, and lifestyle as best we can. So, uh, I just wanted to say that we need to not talk about finite things, this is something that needs to be we, uh, an ongoing conversation that continues for, 'cause fifty years from now, there's gonna be some, there's gonna be people up here talking about preserving the things that we did today. And that's gonna be our legacy as a community, and so that's, that's what we all have in this as a stakeholder, so, I just wanted to throw that out.
Have we started on an RFP yet?
We have started initially, but, um, I'm still struggling with, are we to proceed and provide you with a draft RFP or not?
Yes, and bring that Chesapeake study, so we can all.
And I would like to say that, that I think this, the discussion we had on the, the, um, I'll use the eighty-four feet, but the, the.
That's mine.
The, the overall, um, um, coming up with some new, uh, whatever you wanna call it, design elements for, I would like to table that until we get through this piece, so that then it becomes a part of something that we can all embrace, whatever that then comes to be. Because I think at this point, it's, it's maybe a piecemeal approach. So, I think it would, it would make sense then, we can all support whatever that comes out to be, because it's, it's what is a part of the technical plan that we, that we've come up with. Uh, I think it would be helpful if, if, um, each of the council members would provide some input to Howard, uh, of what should go in the RFP. And I've received a couple of emails with some, with some statements that, that this is what they would like to see. I think the citizen input is extremely important in this whole project, um, and it's wonderful to have a, a workshop for the business community, but it's also very important for the citizens to have input, since they currently pay ninety percent of the taxes. So, I'd like to make sure that we include them, and, and the one group that spoke earlier, uh, is interested in helping with even drafting of the RFP if necessary, so, um, I think, I think that we have to look to people in the community who have background that might be able to help us get this going, and, and we have to start someplace, so, rather than having, um, the city staff have to take that whole burden on, it would be helpful if we could all contribute a little bit to it, and, and have a document that goes out, um, for bid, that, that really represents what we're trying to accomplish and, and resolves.
Well, we need to start with the draft, I think, that they have, and tweak that here, and then we could go through that, so I'm okay, I'm okay with that.
Now, I do ask as an action item that we do have a workshop for the business, but only because we talk about downtown like, in like a theoretical way. If we actually had people actually share, and it needed to be in a workshop session, so they would not feel afraid to be honest, that we would, we need to know what our business environment actually is and what obstacles they have. I think it's just, otherwise, we're operating in the dark, I think that's the piece, we have master plan, we have Aqua. The piece we're missing is those people that we're talking around and around, and I think we need to have that piece. I think at that point, i- it can shape what we do much better, 'cause right now, we, we, like, I'll give you a simple, we talk about this, this, the second-story requirement. People along Marion who are renting from a commercial space, they have to pay rent for two stories. But, our population's older, and no one's gonna use it, because they can't walk up the stairs, and so, it's one of those things where it's, we have so many rules that don't make any sense, which business owners can only share with us, and so if we don't know, if we don't get the truth about what's happening, we're gonna go down the same path of not including them, and that's why I'm saying, why I mentioned the part about actually having a comparison between the LDRs and citizens' master plan, Aqua, and them together, because we need to know where we actually stand, because there are many things that are in the LDRs and not even the master plan, and we assume they're part of the master plan, like, that was caused problems, and it really wasn't, it's just they're there. And I think that, that again, we need to be more technical with this, we're just at that point now, we wanna take action, and I, I, I do say that there, the reason why our state has licenses for licensed professionals is because there is expertise that comes with having a license, and not just what we're assuming.
So, what do you, what is it that you want to do?
I'd like us to have a workshop where interested business persons can come and share their thoughts about what the current climate is, and I think that would be
I, that would be fine.
A piece that we would add to our equation with writing this RFP, then we can be more advised on how to write a better RFP.
I would be okay with that.
I think that we would, should invite anybody to provide input.
There's very diff, it's a big difference, a lot of our business people, because of the climate in our city, we're not as civil as we used to be, people actually feel threatened right now on, on speaking in certain sessions, they feel their business will be threatened, and just talking, I've been talking, 'cause this district, not only am I talking to homeowners, I, I also try to visit as many business owners as I can. And there are things that they will say to me, which they won't say in public unless they're in a space where they're not gonna be attacked, they're just talking real. And so, I'd say a session where, I, I don't know why we're afraid of this, but I don't see why we couldn't just have our business owner share reflection on the business environment.
That can be a concurrent activity, while the draft, the RFP is being.
Yeah, yeah, it can be concurrent, but I said, we need, we need to include that.
I, and I, and I have no problem with having something where people can feel, um, heard, I, I, I understand what you're saying about the fear of retribution, because I've, I've heard business owners express that, um, so I think that to provide, um, opportunities for people to be heard is a good, a good thing.
And even people like in the EDP that I've talked to, they, like, are not supposed to be political, so they're even somewhat hesitant. And those are business people in, in the town. So, sometimes when they're in those other groups, it, it gets a little sticky for them, so, I did have a couple of conversations with, with the members of the EDP, so, Gary, and then, and then.
And I just wanna point out that after these workshops occur, that information will be compiled, and then that's made available to the citizens, citizens, right? They're having their own meetings and workshops, I know that a number of us are participating in them, uh, and they're various sizes, they could be like Monday, or they could be a little gathering at a, at a, uh, at a private home with, uh, twenty people, uh, but it's, it still gets that same conversation going. And then, once we get those positions together, then then we coalesce together as a group and as a family, I think that, that's really what we're saying, let's have these intimate discussions where we can talk unfeathered, and then turn around, and then come together and see where we have commonality, and where we don't, and where we don't, that's where we have to, to start being open-minded and figure out what's the best for the overall picture.
Are you talking about a meeting outside of the sunshine?
No, I know, it would basically be a workshop.
Council workshop.
Yeah, council workshop.
A council workshop. How do you exclude those voices that you see might be antagonistic to the business community?
Oh, well, no, the workshop people would be sp, like, in any workshop, there's no public hearing in a workshop, we're just talking amongst ourselves. So, we would invite people who wanna come to speak, and they'll just speak, and then we'll talk amongst ourselves.
Yeah, and, but if a member of the public that's not part of the business community is, wants to attend that workshop.
Well, they'll come, of course.
Okay.
Oh, of course, no, no, this is not, nothing like, no, we just, I just wanna, I'm just talking real, talking to them, they need a safe space where they can just speak, and there's not gonna be a back and forth about that, they're just be allowed to speak, and their opinion is gonna be respected as their opinion, and it'll stay right there.
Okay.
Nancy?
Just thinking about what you've just said, and I would like to suggest that, I know Howard attends the Downtown Merchants Association meetings, uh, you.
They don't really meet anymore.
They do. Well, yeah, they have a new.
Yeah, we went, I went.
But, but they have a new leadership.
Yes.
They have new leadership, I think, um, that meeting that they. There could be a meeting that could be for them, I know staff has done this in the past, where they have had a meeting and, uh, business owners have come. Uh, it, and if a council member came and listened, so that it's, it's not a, um, council members are not talking, but it's just, we've done this before, where it's just a, a meeting.
Well, we could have, we could honestly have Howard and Lucia run it.
Absolutely.
And if we attended, we attend.
That's what we did at the Civic Association.
Yeah, just like that.
Couple Mondays ago.
But does it have to be in the sunshine, then, David? I, I would want those people to feel free to have a free discussion.
Now, what if it's professionally facilitated, let's say it's like Aqua facilitated it, that kind of meeting?
That would be fine, too.
'Cause that would be a way which it would, they don't have a, you know, what is it, what's it, something, a dog in a game, where, I forgot the word you say.